Good evening.
Good evening.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools Board of Education, meeting to for February 26th to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Jackson?
Here.
Ms. Douglas?
Here.
Dr. Davidson, I guess?
Here.
Mr. Rong?
Here.
Mr. Adler?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Senator President.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Today, we learned that a friend and coworker passed away this morning. Ms. Chanel Farmer was the front desk receptionist. She provided our guests with a welcoming smile and had an infectious laugh that permeated the administration building. Please keep Chanel's family and friends in your thoughts and prayers. And could we have a moment of silence for Chanel? Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda is the announcements. Are there any announcements?
I got one. Congratulations to WCTC Culinary Arts Restaurant Management Team, mentored by Chef Jetty, Chef Kevin Roker, Mrs. Collins, and several volunteer mentors for their first place win in the Illinois Restaurant Association Pro Star Competition in Chicago. The culinary team placed fourth in its competition.
Thank you. Reminder to PPS seniors, the deadline to apply for Peoria Public School Foundation Scholarship is this coming Friday, March 2nd. A list of all scholarships and links to the online application can be found on the PPS Foundation's website at www.ppsfoundation.org/StudentScholarships. The Foundation website also provides a download spreadsheet that describes each scholarship and what is required and which application to fill out. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact the PPS Foundation office at (309) 713-3608 or jennifer.adler@psd150.org. Thank you. Other announcements?
It was a busy Saturday at the Woodruff Career and Technical Center last weekend as over 600 archers from schools throughout Illinois competed in the annual Antero's Classic, an archery tournament held in WCTC's gym each year. Winners took home beautiful one-of-a-kind trophy fabricated by the WCTC Construction Trade and Autobody students. Each trophy began with a slice of trunk from a tree removed from the yard of Construction Trade teacher Michael Bree. Is it Bree or...I'm gonna mispronounce it. Students sanded and varnished the wood discs. Next Autobody students fabricated Warrior feathers and a target.
Thank you. Mr. Walter?
Just a reminder of a few calendar events for parents to take note of. Wednesday, February 28th, is a school improvement day. Students will be dismissed four hours early. Monday, March 5th, is Casimir Pulaski Day. School and offices will be closed. Tuesday, March 6th through April 20th, 3rd through 8th grade students will participate in the annual park test. Tuesday, April 10th, all juniors will take the SAT exam with a makeup test scheduled on April 24th. The SAT is a state mandated graduation requirement for all juniors in Illinois. The next couple I added. March 14th is the student protest day for the Florida shootings. March 24th is the march on Washington. And last but not least, 30 minutes from now, Richwoods Lady Knights are playing for a trip to state.
Thank you. Hello. Dr. Bob?
Buenos noches, bienvenidos. Good evening, welcome. El Sala de Woodruff, Barrio de San Pues, bajo este evento, Black to the Future, directado por Gary Moore. The Woodruff Auditorium will host Black to the Future directed by Gary Moore, which is a journey into Peoria's African-American history. It will be performed March 2nd through the 4th. March 2nd, it will be held at 7:30 PM. On March 3rd, will also be held at 7:30 PM. March 4th, at 4:00 PM. General admission is $2. Based on Dr. Romeo B. Garrett's book, The Negro in Peoria, the play follows two students, played by Justin Worley in Richwoods, and Cameron Walton, Peoria High. They travel through time, meaning historical figures, including, please, I don't know this name, will someone help me? It is spelled D-U-S-A-B-L-E. First name Gene.
DeSable.
DeSable? Thank you very much. Gene DeSable, Frederick Douglass, Moses Pedengill, Annie Malone, Dr. Maude Sanders, John Gwynne, Frank Campbell, and many more. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements?
I will simply add a second congratulations to the Richwoods Lady Knights, because Mr. Walter stole my announcement, and say hurrah for beating Morton last weekend.
And good luck tonight.
Thank you.
So they're playing Cankey Key tonight?
Seven o'clock.
All right. No other announcements? Okay. The Community Contribution Award this evening. Tonight's Community Contribution Award recognizes the work of a manual alumni and community volunteer. Earlier this month, Mr. Jose Washington and the Peoria Manual Academy Robo-Rams put together an event that featured guest speakers, Dr. Luther B. Bejel, NASA scientist, and S-C-H-E-R-L-O-C principal, Sherlock principal investigator of NASA's Jet Propulsion. Staff, students, and parents of Peoria Public Schools, as well as members of the Peoria community, were invited to his special presentation, and it was free, on Friday evening at Peoria Manual Academy Auditorium. He also participated in the Robo-Rams competition event the next day. Mr. Washington is here. I just saw him come in. How are you tonight?
Fine.
And some of the Robo-Ram students. And I would like to invite you to the podium to share more about their work and your work, please. Mr. Washington.
Hello, everyone. We appreciate the opportunity to come before you. We also, we have already started working on next year's program. We're sort of looking at some things what we're doing with the robots and competing and becoming a better team. We have two teams, team number 9788, team number 8648, and right now, we're like in the down...our season is over. This year, we didn't make it past to state, but we hope to reach that again. We did two years ago, and we made it to state. Both teams did. And so, we're working on it to make sure. We've got some more things we're looking at doing. We actually meet down at the...I forgot the school. It's on Madison. It's one of the schools that closed up. I forgot the old school. You remember it? I know your dad went there. It's one of the schools that closed up on Madison. And we meet there like every...
Keeman.
Thank you. Thank you. The old Keeman Building. We meet there Tuesday, Thursday, and Saturday during the season. And so, we're preparing for next year and working on some things. And we have mentors, coaches. We're also looking for more mentors, because we like to be around about 15, 20 students. And we started off manual Robo-Rams, but we extended it to other students as well, from Washington Giffith to Kevin Coolidge to...it goes from middle school, 7th through 12th grade. So, we have students, juniors, seniors. And this is where all your scholarship money is going too, as well as like in engineering programs. A lot of your institutions, your like corporate America, they're putting money towards students to go into robotics, and they're putting engineers to go through that. And so, they're putting money there. So, that's where a lot of your scholarships for schools, institutions, then they're putting money to help out. So, our sponsorship is Caterpillar, Peoria School, District 450, and we've got one more, the school, New Beginning Ministries, who purchased the school. So, those are our main sponsors. And so, I'm gonna turn it over to a few of the students, and if you want, you can tell what you did. And also, you can tell what school you go to and your name, first of all. What grade?
I'm Jewel. I'm 7th grade, and I go to Washington Giffith Middle School. My main contribution to our team is like, so I basically do programming, and we have to make a 3D draft of our robot, and I pretty much did that. Yeah. And I've been on the team for about three years? Three, yeah, three years. It's a pretty good experience.
Thank you.
My name is Ryan, and I've been on the team for like one and a half years. And I did one of the main drivers. I'm in 5th grade, and I'm homeschool.
My name is Julius. I'm from Manuel. My main responsibility is like come up with new ideas for our robots.
What school are you from, Julius?
Manuel.
Manuel? Okay, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to thank you for your participation, especially you, Mr. Washington. I've been knowing you a long time. Alumni is so blessed to have you. And we have a small token of our appreciation Dr. Karat has there.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Ross. I just want you to know, Mr. Washington, I admire your passion. Even as Principal of Manuel, starting in 2008, he was very, very involved. He's not being paid a penny, not one penny. And I just love what you're doing in terms of exposing our kids to authentic 21st century skills, problem solving, young people, Jewel, Ryan, and Julius. Thank you for being involved and investing in yourself, the stuff that you're doing. That's amazing. You're learning, as you said, new experiences, and that's where the jobs are in the STEM field. So, we appreciate you just being part of this and being committed to it. So, continue to have fun. And I know Mr. Washington told me some of the plans that he has for you in terms of autonomous vehicles and moving in that area. So, thank you, sir, and the students will follow you, and thank you, okay?
Any of the parents from Manuel present? Or from any of the schools?
Or the principal?
Or the principal? The principal here. Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is the Student Showcase. Ms. Douglas?
Hi. Tonight's Student Showcase features our middle school basketball varsity and junior varsity champions. I would like to ask each school principal and/or coach to the podium to introduce us to their team, and ask that each of the team members present come to the lineup in front of the podium as their names is called, so that we can get a team picture. First, our junior varsity champions from Sterling Middle School with Ms. Lane and the team coach, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Karat, I would like to introduce my coach for the JV varsity team, Mr. Tim Solberger.
Thank you. Good evening. The boys, Coach Green and I, would like to thank you for the opportunity to be recognized this evening. And very proud of what the boys were able to accomplish this season, throughout the season, and their double overtime championship victory. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce the boys one at a time. Trayden Thompson, Braylon Randall, Daquan Little, Dietrich Richardson, Kayden Lada, Marty Grant, Kaylin Edwards, and Torres Ball.
Chris, do we get medals? Do we have medals for them?
Okay, the next one. Kevin Coolidge?
You have another one.
You have another one. Kevin Coolidge?
Next, our varsity champions from Kevin Coolidge Middle School, Mr. Swanson.
As team, please come to the podium.
Very much. Can't say I've ever thought I'd be forgotten before. No. On behalf of myself and Ms. Suggs, I would like to thank everybody for this opportunity. Dr. Karat, President Ross, and the school board, we very much appreciate you having us here. I would like to introduce our basketball coach, Mr. Will Nichols, to introduce our students.
I'm Coach Will Nichols from Kevin Coolidge Middle School. I'd just like to say it was an honor to coach this team right here. The last couple of years, they won first in the city, so that was accomplishment alone. But first, I want to thank like our principal and our assistant principal. They really were supportive of our whole season and everything that we did. But more important than our players this year, with the families that's here. So, they're the ones that really carry us. So, you know when they're in the building, and you know when they're leaving, because people ask them to leave. But we represent them as a family. First off, I'd like to call up Derek Roddy. Next, I'm gonna call Stashion Kelly without his shooting shirt. Not a secret. Our Mr. Bryson Hodge. Kamari Webbs Moon. Kamara Daley. Jaron Traps. Tristan White. And the last one I think we have here is Trey Greenwood.
Aytiana, can you give them their medals? Put their medals around here. Give it to them. All right. Put them on, boys. Thank you.
Coach, are you sure they're not in high school? This is some tall bitch. Thank you all. Are there parents available?
Yeah, they're all here.
All right, stand up.
Thank you all for having us here too. Parents, please stand up.
What about the parents part? Any Sterling School parents available? All right, stand up. We already talked to the principals. Any teachers available, teachers attendance tonight? Thank you all so much. We know that parents are the key to better education and better performance for kids. So, thank you all for being here. Keep it up. Thank you, Ms. Douglas. Thank you, Chris, for the medals. They'll have to put theirs on and go out in the hallway and take a picture. We forgot them. Okay, we're gonna postpone number seven and move to number eight. Give them a moment to...Valeska shines at 25.
Good evening. My name is Katie Cobb, and I'm the principal at Valeska Hinton. And it's our 25th anniversary. So, Valeska shines at 25. Up on the screen, you'll see we have preschool for all. We have IDA classrooms. We use Project Screen to find students in our community that can benefit from preschool. And we are currently the silver circle of quality at our program. Valeska takes a village. Our staff is composed of 24 highly qualified early childhood teachers, 23 highly qualified paraprofessionals. We have eight speech pathologists for our students, two social workers, one psychologist, and two clerical. In our building, we have 435 3- to 5-year-olds throughout the day. In those classrooms, there are lots of different types of classrooms that we have. 16 of those classroom sessions are preschool for all. Eight of them are half-day, so you have students in the morning and in the afternoon. And eight of them are full-day classrooms from 8:30 to 3:30. Valeska classrooms also include our 14 IDA sessions. 12 of those half-day sessions, three of them focus on the STAR curriculum, which is students with autism. Nine of them are self-contained classrooms. Two are full-day, which include our co-taught class for the deaf and hard-of-hearing students. Our Valeska classroom also includes one classroom which has two half-day sessions, and that's our Title I classroom. So, we have had 25 years at Valeska, and we are getting ready to expand. Valeska Hinton has a preschool-for-all expansion classes that are going to be located at Woodruff site. Of those expansion classrooms, students will get the holistic program. There'll be eight...or excuse me, five highly qualified teachers. There'll be five highly qualified paraprofessionals. And that includes one lead teacher and one parent educator, and then one clerical for these classrooms. Of these classrooms, we'll have 104 to 5-year-olds getting ready for kindergarten. Looking forward, Valeska Hinton in 2018 is going to have three of the Title I classrooms. Two of those classrooms will be dual immersion, or dual-language immersion classrooms. We'll have our preschool-for-all expansion classrooms, our preschool-for-all classrooms, and our IDA classrooms. So, now, Ms. Rose is going to talk to you a little bit about what our dual immersion, our dual-language immersion classrooms will look like.
Good evening. Just want to talk about the benefits of why we're starting this initiation of dual-language immersion. There are obvious reasons to learn a second language, to advance in career, to make traveling enjoyable, and to expand horizons. But the most obvious thing for us and children is to develop their cognitive benefits in learning a second language. It not only helps them learn better, retain information, increase memory, also, it helps them develop holistically. The critical time for students to learn a second language is between the ages of 2 through 13 years of age. The younger the child is, the more readily they're able to acquire a second language. That's why it's harder for adults to learn a second language as adults. So, they miss that time. You either use those brain cells or lose them. So, the key time is pre-K and on. Those benefits will help them retain information, like I said, process information, keep their brain sharp. And it also buffers them against diseases like Alzheimer's and dementia. It's very important to point out that the goal of the program is to maintain those grade-level language proficiencies in English and in Spanish, as well as academic achievement in those core subjects like ELA, mathematics, science, and social studies. The outcome intended is for students to be bilingual, bicultural, and biliterate. Students will achieve academic excellence in two languages, which will help them acquire those common core state standards in those core subjects, and also help develop that cultural awareness and sensitivity to other languages and other cultures. I think it's very important to be able to communicate in two languages. And I know there's only a few people that are maybe one person that was able to understand what I said. And that's the whole point of the dual immersion. We want to make sure that we're offering this important development in intelligence and brain growth and density for those kids, as well as for those bilingual students that are coming to learn English. The late Vera Smith, principal of Harrison...
I'm Coach Will, the coach from Calvin College Middle School. I'd just like to say it was an honor to coach this team right here. The last couple of years, they've won first in the city, so that was accomplishment alone. But first, I want to thank our principal and our assistant principal. They really were supportive of our whole season and everything that we did. But more important than our players this year were the families that's here. So they're the ones that really carry us. So you know when they're in the building and you know when they're leaving because people ask them to leave. But we represent them as a family. First off, I'd like to call up Derek Roddy. Next, I'm going to call Stashion Kelly without his shooting shirt. Not a secret. All right, Mr. Bryson Hodge. Tristan White. And the last one I think we have here is Trey Greenwood.
Ayanna, can you give them their medals? Put their medals around there. Give it to them. All right. There you go. Put them on, boys. Thank you.
I see daddy. I see daddy. I see daddy. I see daddy.
Coach, are you sure they're not in high school? This is some tall bitch. Thank you all. Are their parents available?
Yeah, they're all here.
All right, stand up.
Thank you all for having us here too. Parents, please stand up.
What about the parents part? Any Sterling School parents available? All right, stand up. We already talked to the principals. Any teachers available, teacher's attendance tonight? Thank you all so much. We know that parents are the key to better education and better performance for kids. So thank you all for being here. Keep it up. Thank you, Mr. Douglas. Thank you, Chris, for the medals. They'll have to put theirs on and go out in the hallway and take a picture. We forgot them. Where are we now? Okay, we're going to postpone number seven and move to number eight. Give them a moment to...
Good evening. My name is Katie Cobb, and I'm the principal at Valeska Hinton. And it's our 25th anniversary, so Valeska shines at 25. Up on the screen, you'll see we have preschool for all, we have IDA classrooms. We use Project Screen to find students in our community that can benefit from preschool. And we are currently the Silver Circle of Quality at our program. Valeska takes a village. Our staff is composed of 24 highly qualified early childhood teachers, 23 highly qualified paraprofessionals. We have eight speech pathologists for our students, two social workers, one psychologist, and two clerical. In our building, we have 435 three-to-five-year-olds throughout the day. In those classrooms, there are lots of different types of classrooms that we have. 16 of those classroom sessions are preschool for all. Eight of them are half-day, so you have students in the morning and in the afternoon. And eight of them are full-day classrooms from 8:30 to 3:30. Valeska classrooms also include our 14 IDA sessions. 12 of those half-day sessions, three of them focus on the STAR curriculum, which is Students with Autism. Nine of them are self-contained classrooms. Two are full-day, which include our co-taught class for the deaf and hard-of-hearing students. Our Valeska classroom also includes one classroom which has two half-day sessions, and that's our Title I classroom. So we have had 25 years at Valeska, and we are getting ready to expand. Valeska Hinton has a preschool-for-all expansion classes that are going to be located at Woodruff Site. Of those expansion classrooms, students will get the holistic program. There'll be eight, or excuse me, five highly qualified teachers. There'll be five highly qualified paraprofessionals. And that includes one lead teacher and one parent educator, and then one clerical for these classrooms. Of these classrooms, we'll have 104-to-five-year-olds getting ready for kindergarten. Looking forward, Valeska Hinton in 2018 is going to have three of the Title I classrooms. Two of those classrooms will be dual immersion, or dual-language immersion classrooms. We'll have our preschool-for-all expansion classrooms, our preschool-for-all classrooms, and our IDA classrooms. So now, Ms. Rose is going to talk to you a little bit about what our dual-immersion, our dual-language immersion classrooms will look like.
Good evening. Just want to talk about the benefits of why we're starting this initiation of dual-language immersion. There are obvious reasons to learn a second language, to advance in career, to make traveling enjoyable, and to expand horizons. But the most obvious thing for us and children is to develop their cognitive benefits in learning a second language. It not only helps them learn better, retain information, increase memory, also it helps them develop holistically. The critical time for students to learn a second language is between the ages of two through 13 years of age. The younger the child is, the more readily they're able to acquire a second language. That's why it's harder for adults to learn a second language as adults. So they miss that time. You either use those brain cells or lose them. So the key time is pre-K and on. Those benefits will help them retain information, like I said, process information, keep their brain sharp. And it also buffers them against diseases like Alzheimer's and dementia. It's very important to point out that the goal of the program is to maintain those grade-level language proficiencies in English and in Spanish, as well as academic achievement in those core subjects like ELA, mathematics, science, and social studies. The outcome intended is for students to be bilingual, bicultural, and biliterate. Students will achieve academic excellence in two languages, which will help them acquire those Common Core state standards in those core subjects, and also help develop that cultural awareness and sensitivity to other languages and other cultures. I think it's very important to be able to communicate in two languages. El procesamiento entre los dos idiomas es muy importante, y el cerebro nos ayuda a devolver esas importancias a nuestras familias, el mundo entero. And I know there's only a few people that, or maybe one person, that was able to understand what I said. And that's the whole point of the dual immersion. We want to make sure that we're offering this important development in intelligence and brain growth and density for those kids, as well as for those bilingual students that are coming to learn English. The late Vera Smith, principal of Harrison, had a vision, and her vision was one day to develop this type of language, dual immersion program for students, because she saw the benefits in those bilingual students, and she wanted that opportunity for the monolingual students. So I'm very excited that her dream is coming to fruition, and we're able to promote that and have those kids advance in all areas, not just academics. Thank you.
So Board, thank you, Katie, and thank you, Ms. Anna Rose. I've asked the principal of Valeska Hinton to give us an update because there's some exciting things happening at Valeska. We're very excited. Last week, we received a letter notification from Illinois State Board of Education stating that we were awarded $700,000 to actually implement those five classrooms that she mentioned immediately. And so Valeska is full, and so that's why we took an eye at Woodruff, and we're really excited they've approved. And Principal Katie Cobb's and Dr. Wilson, and actually Carla, have worked very, very, very hard on this grant. And Katie is, Katie, you're doing a really nice job with Valeska. I'm proud of you. I'm proud of what you're doing. And she says, Dr. Carratt, if we do this well, we have an opportunity, because you guys wrote another grant, we wrote another grant that's pending. When will we hear about, when will we hear about it?
March.
March. And that was for $1,001,000. How much?
Should know it off the top of my head.
1.2. 1.2.
Once you get past $1,000,000.
Who's counting right? But, and Katie believes we have a very, very good chance of getting that. So we're really excited, all of us, Dr. Wilson, Carla, Katie, and Anna Rose. I'm excited about the dual immersion also, to several kids. As you heard, they're three to five. And with the 100 kids, that will deplete Valeska Hinton's waiting list. So that's beautiful. So there are five positions posted. You're looking for five pre-K teachers. And again, the projected start date to get this thing up and running is March?
26.
March 26. So, and we have to spend all of this money by then, and it's very exciting. Dr. Wilson, would you like to add anything else to it?
No, I think be careful what you ask for. We actually wrote the grant in October for this year. And so we thought, we obviously didn't get it, and Dr. Carratt came down so excited, "We have $750,000." And I said, "Now?" So in less than two weeks, Mrs. Cobb has completely ordered classrooms, and every, you can imagine, Woodruff to what it looks like at Valeska. And so it's amazing. And as Dr. Carratt said, the most exciting thing for me is all those children that have been waiting, waiting, waiting to have an experience at Valeska now get a full-day experience. Only a few haven't before kindergarten, but how about that? They'll be able to have a jumpstart into that. So it's pretty exciting. So be careful what you ask for. Sometimes you get it, maybe not in the time that you wanted, but we're excited regardless.
So we'll have the Board, if you have any questions for Ms. Cobb and Ms. Anna Rose, that would be great.
You addressed mine. I was going to ask her to talk a little bit about the waiting list, but that's, she's already addressed that. Thank you. Any other questions?
Muchas gracias.
Maybe we'll be able to increase the amount of people that are understanding you, Dr. Bob, in the future. Gracias.
I can a little bit, Dr. Bob.
And that's not an estimate, people, because they do. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Yes, presentation. Oh, we have the calendar. Now, Chris Copeland, where's Chris? Going to talk a little bit about the 2018-19-20 calendar.
Yes, we're approaching 2020. Who would have thought? Good evening. Each spring, the Calendar Committee reconvenes to begin building the calendar for two years out. So on April 3 of 2017, the Board approved our 18-19 calendar. And typically, about now, we're bringing the 19-20 calendar to you. So our Calendar Committee typically consists of, or at least a limitation is sent to a representative from each of our bargaining units, myself, the Curriculum and Instruction Officer, our HR Director, a Valeska Hinton or year-round school representative, and our Research and Accountability Director. This year, we also wanted more input from principals and across our district, so we invited Mr. Turner from Keller, Ms. Clark from Roosevelt, and Dr. Coleman from Peoria High. And with those three representatives, we had representatives from each of our high school regions, as well as each of our primary middle and high schools. At the request of our principals, in addition to beginning to plan out the 19-20 school year calendar, we also decided to revisit the 18-19 calendar. And so on tonight's agenda is the recommendation for approval of our amendment for the 18-19 year and approval for the 19-20 calendars, both of which I'll summarize a few changes in our committee's work and thought process behind those changes. So Section 24-2 of the school code allows the school board to hold a public hearing, and following that hearing, vote to waive five school holidays. And this Board of Education did that back on December 10 of 2012. And so we already have those five holidays waived. And with the suggestion of our principals, we look to improve our schedule of instruction by eliminating some shortened weeks throughout the year, and also looking at adding a fall break to reduce burnout and improve both student and staff attendance. We have proposed the amendment calendar for 18-19 school year that utilizes the holiday waiver for Casimir Pulaski and Columbus Day. We know that our current and recent practices have been a break typically around three-quarters of the way through the semester, with Thanksgiving break in late November, and then our spring break has been typically attached to Easter. And so that typically falls late into second semester. Our goal with utilizing the holiday waiver for the two holidays this coming year is to reallocate those days off, to build in a break that fits just after the end of the first quarter, the same week as parent-teacher conferences. With that, principals also reported that attendance at conferences is generally higher during evenings, more so during the day. And so we restructured the week of October 15, where Monday and Tuesday would be full student attendance days, followed by parent-teacher conferences in the evening from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. And that Wednesday, that would be the traditional day off for schools to accommodate those Wednesday, those two parent-teacher conference days. So typically, we've had conferences on Thursday night and Friday morning with no student attendance day on Friday. This proposal actually moves that to Monday and Tuesday night, no school for staff or students on Wednesday, and then reallocating those two holidays, Columbus and Casimir Pulaski, days to Thursday and Friday, allowing staff and students to have a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday fall break. Finally, we didn't want to come back from a break and go right into a SIP day, which was scheduled for the week following parent-teacher conferences. So we did push that back one week to the end of October, which happens to be this coming year on Halloween. And the principals were strategic in how they approached that, in that typically, SIP days, our attendance rates are a little lower. And so we feel like by pushing that on to Halloween, that we can actually raise attendance with some of the activities that go on that day. As it relates to Valeska Hinton and Knoxville Center, this also led to a few changes. Their parent-teacher conferences fall in late September and are on the same week as their SIP day, or as the SIP day in late December. So with early childhood programs, SIP days are a little more of a challenge because it's typically a half-day. So Valeska Hinton has to cancel their afternoon pre-K classes where morning continues, so those students get four days more instruction, or classes than the afternoon classes. And the other thing that went into that is pre-K or early childhood students are only required by the state to attend school 165 days per year, as compared to kindergarten through 12th grade students who are supposed to be in school 174 days. And so what we did was, again, SIP day falls on parent-teacher conference week. Valeska Hinton would utilize that as a full-day Teacher Institute day, and so there would be no student attendance on Wednesday. And we also didn't want students to come back then for one day of instruction, followed by the Friday parent-teacher conference day off. And the staff felt that they could fully utilize that day also with early childhood. As we just seen, there's a lot of requirements for training, for grants. And so they're, they've been knocked in the past because they haven't had those opportunities. So utilizing those two weeks of parent-teacher conferences in the spring and the fall, and allowing Teacher Institute days to take place on Wednesday, Thursday, and then the Teacher Conference Day would, for staff and students, would be off on Friday. And then Knoxville Center is a little bit different. They have to have those full 174 days. They would continue for that half-day SIP day like the rest of the district, have a full student attendance day on Thursday, and then be off on Friday for parent-teacher conferences, although both schools would have their parent-teacher conferences those evenings, Wednesday and Thursday. All right, and the final change, in the first SIP day for Knoxville Center and Valeska is typically held at the end of August, and that will be moved to July 17. So whereas the district, other schools start on Wednesday with students, teachers are coming Monday and Tuesday for faculty institutes, Valeska and Knoxville start in mid-July. Typically, Monday's a Teacher Institute, Tuesday is the first day of school. So we're moving that SIP day to that Tuesday and having the kids start on Wednesday as well. Again, for Knoxville, they'll actually start Tuesday with a half-day, and Wednesday would be the first full day of school for Knoxville, whereas Valeska would start with all their students on Wednesday, with Monday and Tuesday being a faculty institute. So that summarizes the 18-19 school calendar amendment. And then just quickly, a couple additions for 19-20. In addition to rolling over the calendar that we proposed for 18-19, the few changes that we've made for 19-20, including making Veterans Day in November a student attendance day. And what that does is obviously allows, required by state law, when we attend, when we have classes on those state holidays, we are required to focus instruction around those holidays. So be a great lesson for our students. And with that, focusing back to the spring then, moving up spring conferences by one week on the calendar, decoupling spring break from Easter, and having that to the last four-week in March. Of course, Good Friday is a district holiday with a staff holiday, and so they are already off that Friday. And so we would be able to move, reallocate the Veterans Day holiday to the Monday after Easter. So we realized one of the concerns with staff and students is that a lot travel for the Easter weekend to be with family, to have Easter dinner, and we wanted to allow a four-day weekend for those families that do travel to have a little bit more time to come back to school. So for Valeska and Knoxville, really no big changes with the second year, with the exception of, by the district calendar, moving conferences up a week and then having a spring break. I should mention, moving conferences up a week gets them in before spring break that last week of March. So the conferences would fall on Wednesday, Thursday night. The other thing we talked about is having a Monday, Tuesday first semester, and a Wednesday, Thursday second semester would allow us to make sure to take notes on our parent attendance for parent-teacher conferences to find out which day of the week is best attended and make plans from there moving forward. But for the second semester, so Wednesday, Thursday evening would be the parent-teacher conferences, Friday would be the parent-teacher conference day off, which would also start spring break the next week. And so by doing that for Valeska and Knoxville Center, spring break the following week, decoupled from Easter in late March, this calendar would be in-school on Friday while the rest of the district is off. So the Friday leading into spring break for the rest of the district, Valeska and Knoxville would still be in attendance. So those are the, that's the highlight of the changes. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I know it was a lot.
Questions?
Quick question? Sure. I believe that. And you said this before, but I forgot. How many teachers were involved in the committee that helped you do this? The teachers, there was, actually, this year, the bargaining, each bargaining unit was invited to send a representative. So they actually elected to make the Valeska teacher also the union teacher that was the representative. Okay, so how many total? Just the one teacher. So one teacher? Correct. But we asked them to go back in and share the information that we were discussing with each of their teams. Okay.
Other questions?
Usually, we go with their recommendation.
Okay, no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now at the place on our agenda that provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the Board with your comments and suggestions. There are some issues we are not at liberty to discuss in public, such as personnel and other executive session topics. However, if you have a specific personal concern that needs to be addressed, we will get a staff person to help you. In addition, Board members, phone numbers and emails are listed on the website, PSD150.org. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and state your name for our records. Each person will be given five minutes to speak. As a reminder, no one under age 18 will be able to address the Board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or teacher without the consent of the majority of the Board. Our first speaker this evening is Ms. Sharon Cruz.
I have given you 13 pages listing the 1,080 Fs received by 446 of Peoria High's 1,246 students for first semester. The other list is for the same grades, showing the number of failures in each of 94 courses. There are no passing grades listed on any of these pages. These are the same students who either created the chaos or were victims of the chaos that I reported to you in January. These Fs prove how discipline problems keep students from learning. 193 students received one F. 106 got two Fs. 70 got three Fs. 41 got four Fs. 15 got five Fs. 20 got six Fs. 14 got seven Fs. And one got eight Fs. Recently, we were asked to consider giving only passing grades, no Fs. If that policy had been in place, what grade would replace all these Fs? Eliminating Fs would certainly eliminate the need and expense of offering repeat courses. Certainly, the graduation rate would improve. But what good does eliminating Fs do for students? They will get diplomas and transcripts that will deceive employers and colleges for a while unless they have entrance exams. Most of all, the students themselves and their parents will be deceived. These students can be given passing grades, but you can't give them the knowledge and/or skills they didn't acquire. 181 students failed English. 54 failed English I. 50 failed Algebra I and 29 failed Math. 70 failed Geometry. 43 failed Biology. 38 failed Physical Science. 38 failed physical science. 43 failed both world history and world geography. Most of these are required courses that must be made up, or they are needed for students to have the required number of hours for graduation. Obviously, many of these students came to Peoria High unprepared to succeed academically, learning undoubtedly hampered by discipline problems. What are the chances that the same number of students fail second semester classes? Undoubtedly, the current 10th, 11th, and 12th graders still have not retaken all their failed courses. Do any of you believe that the district's credit recovery program can give these students enough time to make up these courses during the regular school day? I have often marveled that students who struggle with English are asked to take two English classes during the same semester. Almost 200 students failing just English at just Peoria High should convince all of you that summer school is an absolute necessity. Please consider the data before you say yes to year-round school. Year-round school will eliminate any chance of reinstating summer school. Motivated, successful students will continue to pass all the courses they take. Students who are more apt to fail will get further and further behind with no opportunity to catch up. Summer school would give a significant number of these students a chance to catch up. I believe the new option, Peoria Options Program will help some of these juniors and seniors to graduate, but many upperclassmen and many ninth and 10th graders will still need to make up courses. In the article about the POP program, Dr. Karat's quote stated that what's happening now is not working, and we're trying to figure out how kids learn today and how they learn best. You're not ever going to know if any methods are working until the discipline situation is under control. Also, cell phone usage is rampant in our schools, and there are no effective efforts to curb it. I am sure you all know that even though texting and game playing don't create noise, young people with phones in hand don't hear a word anyone is saying. Even in classrooms with few discipline problems, cell phones might be a tremendous roadblock to learning. Please consider this data before deciding to eliminate Fs or saying yes to year-round school. Thank you.
Mr. Terry Natt.
Yes, congratulations on your grants for Valeska Hinton. However, Ms. Cruz always presents you with great research. I think it's time again, and I've asked this for the last 10 years, that you research what goes on at Valeska Hinton. Valeska Hinton has had 25 years of existence. 11 classes have graduated from high school. We have asked continually that you give us the research on how many or what percentage of those students graduate from high school. We still don't know that. We've asked that in this body numerous times and been told it's not that hard to do and nobody ever does it. In other words, I'm interested in knowing the success rate of those students who start in fourth grade, used to be third grade, I think, and then graduate or don't graduate. I'm also interested in the number of students who go to Valeska Hinton that are not at risk. A lot of times, badly professors, lawyers' kids, doctors' kids go to Valeska Hinton, and it's said, oh, well, we can put a certain number of those kids in. I know personally that superintendents have simply called the principal of Valeska Hinton and said, put these kids in, you don't have to test them or test them later. That's not the process. The process is to test them first and then put them in. I'm asking you, as board members, to research how many of these students are not even at risk. I'm tired of paying taxpayer money to people who have the affordability to send their kids to preschool. You need to do the research. You also need to research Quest. Last week I talked, or two weeks ago, I talked about Quest. The CFO got up here and was called on about the grades reported by the school report card and also the test scores and the attendance, and simply said, well, that's not the way we figure it. What do you mean, that's not the way they figure it? They're going to cost you more money in another year or two than, than you're going to give them. You're going to be losing money. Up to this point, you've gained money. You need to look at this and research it. The same CFO was tied to the Edison Corporation. The Edison Corporation cost this district $40 million extra, $17 million directly to the company. You need to be aware of that. They bilked this community, they went to an IPO, went to $38 a share, and in six weeks it was $0.14 a share. They bought it back, the company dissolved, the CEO of Edison sold his $38 million house in the Hamptons and went to Europe never to be seen again. Chris Whittle, if you want to look it up. It's important that you do the research. The research also on this year-round school deal. I can't believe this. I've gone to two meetings, one back before Christmas and one on February 2nd, I think it was. I gave you this copy. Everybody at the Horseshoe got this copy. Nine pages. Sharon Cruz compiled this. 34 pages. Sharon Cruz compiled this, took the research. I presented this research at the February 2nd meeting and asked that this be posted on your website. I asked that it be posted in every one of the schools so that parents could avail themselves at your schools to read this material. Obviously, that was a month ago. It's not in the schools yet. It's not on your website yet. Nobody wants to see this information. Educate your parents and the people in your schools about year-round school. This is it. 10 different states quoted in here. Not successful. What is it that we keep information from parents and from teachers and from the six principals who were in the meeting? The six principals that were in the meeting and one central administrator never saw this information before. I gave this to the central administrator. It's not on your website, and it's a sad condition when you don't inform the public. I want to thank again personally Ms. Cruz for all the valuable information she gives you and the fact that these Fs, if you don't have summer school, you're cheating the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabino Sierra.
You know, it's really sad when we have these people that do a lot of this research and they come up with some pretty bad reports. And it's, it's, you're just hurting the students by not really knuckling down and find better ways to educate them, to get them trained, to want to learn, and stuff like that. So when they go to graduate or when they, they go to college, even the colleges will tell you, the students aren't ready for college because they don't know what the hell they're doing. And there are some, you know, that make it through, but I'm sure, pretty sure they're, they come from families that the parents coach them too and help them, you know, with their homework. Have you? And we're going to have to do better, this District 150, you know? We go around blowing our own bugle, but it ain't getting us no place when it comes time to the, to really find out. We're sunk. And you got to get in, you know, one of the biggest thing is to learn how to read and write. And from there, when, when you know how to read and comprehend what you're reading, then you got half of it whipped. So this, we better start knuckling down on that, you know, and have them go on and on with different subjects. Keep drilling them all the time, you know? Don't, don't get all these sports and that, you know? Cancel some of those sports and, and get them going on their, on their subjects, on their education. That, a lot of those young basketball players, they're going to get, they're not going to get far, you know what I mean? And it'd be nice if they could, but it, they're going to fall by the wayside. I've been, I've been pretty lucky. My, some of my grandkids went to Valeska Hinton and, and they, they come out pretty good. In fact, one of them left Valeska and she's going to, oh, Glen Oak. She's going to Glen Oak School. But I tell you people, you're not doing your job. I hate to tell you, you know? I quit school after my freshman year at Spalding, and what I learned in those years that it helped me along to educate myself and read some more, you know? And this, you know, you can educate yourself. Look at Abraham Lincoln, you know? He made it. And what, what I learned in those nine years, I put it to work and I, I can say that I, I did some pretty important work, you know what I mean? I was treasurer of my union, recording secretary of my union, and a few other important positions that you have to learn how to speak and realize what you're saying, you know? Comprehend what you're saying and talking about. And so I'm telling you people, you better get on the ball, otherwise we're going to have to not just criticize you here, but we're going to have to make this more public and get you people to, I don't say all this, get you people to get on the ball. And even if you guys have to go to the classrooms, classrooms yourself, well, get, get on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any response to audience presentation? Can I help you, sir?
Ma'am, I just wondered, I, I got here after the meeting started, so I didn't get the opportunity to fill out a request to speak for, but a lady friend of mine.
Could I, just a second. Can I have a consensus from the board that will allow him to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. My name is Edward Moore, and I'm a native Peoria, and I was born in the old Proctor Hospital downtown here many years ago. I'm a baby boomer. My parents, my father was a bus driver for the city of Peoria the first five years of my life. We lived on the North End over on Madison and Van Buren, and we moved over across the river to North Peak, and I grew up, my grade school years in North Peak, and then graduated from Peaking High School in 1972. You know, I, I want to like address the issue a little bit of what they're speaking to, but.
Could you, could you state your, your address again?
Actually, I live in Peaking right now, in Tazewell.
Your address?
230 Court Street.
Okay.
Apartment 1409, Peaking, Illinois. Part of why I came tonight, a lady friend of mine, I was supposed to meet her here and she was going to address, her daughter had received, she has a child that goes to Richwoods, and her daughter had received death threat from a fellow student out there. And I was going to come and offer her some moral support because she was going to speak in front of the board this evening. You know, after what happened in Florida recently, and you know, we've had school shootings more and more happening all the time, I wanted to address that a little bit. Like I said, I graduated in 72. When we had problems with students back in the day, you know, we took it to the parking lot over at the Dairy Queen across the street, you know? Put up your dukes and settle it like that. There was no knives, guns, you know? I mean, it's, society's gotten really, really out of control, you know? A lot of the things that are affecting it, you know, the media, like you said, the, the problem with the kids bringing phones to school. I mean, I grew up in a house in North Peak, and we had one telephone, we had one TV set in the house, you know? And that was before the days of pagers or cell phones, you know? So society has really gone through a lot of, I won't say they've always been positive changes, you know, throughout the years with technology and everything. But I am a recovering drug addict. I'm coming up on 30 years clean on the 11th of May of this year. I was kicked out of Peaking High School my junior year of high school. My parents went to bat for me with the District 303 Board of Education, got me to go back to summer school and make up for the credits I got that I had lost my junior year when I was kicked out. And I went back and graduated with my class in 1972. But I, I really wanted to just shed a light on, on this situation with my friend's daughter. Anytime, you know, she said that she had contacted somebody at the board and they said, well, the next time it happens, and like she became very distraught over that, well, like the next time, her child could be dead, you know? I mean, the way, the way society is these days with, like I said, with these school shootings happening all over the country, and a lot of them in very small communities, you know, they're not even big cities. Well, you know, there's nothing to say it couldn't happen right here in Peoria. There's nothing to say it couldn't happen across the river in Peaking, you know? A lot of the, the kids today are growing up in single-family homes, you know, single-parent homes. My grandchildren grew up on the South End. My, my daughter fell in love with a black man here in Peoria and have four beautiful grandchildren that lived in the Harrison Homes for 10 years. My daughter used to live right across the street from the Harrison School, so I have grandkids that are in manual. And, you know, I know there's no easy solutions to the, the problems that are going on in our society today, especially with the kids, but you know, like I was a contributor to the negative side of life for so long when I was an addict and active addiction, and now that I'm coming up on 30 years of recovery this spring, you know, it's really incumbent on me to, being a grandparent now, to try and do whatever I can, speak out however I can, and try and make a difference in this community because this is my hometown, you know? And I don't want to see any school shootings happen here in my hometown. You know, I know y'all don't want to, you know, so, you know, whatever we can do as individuals, as a, you know, I'm, I'm also involved in PCAF, you know? They do, they do stands, stand-ups in the community whenever there's a homicide in the community. Peoria Community Against Violence, you know? Any way we can get plugged in to try and make this community a better, a better place, we need to individually and, and as a whole. So thank you for letting me speak my voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Approval of minutes from January 20th and February 12th. May I have a moment? May I have a motion?
I move that we adopt the minutes from January 22nd and February 12th, 2018.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Thank you. Information items, proposed expenditures over $2,500. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Willis? Seeing none. Report of request under the Freedom of Information Act and the status of such request.
Thank you, President Ross. Since our last board meeting on February 12th, we've received-
Two new requests. Of those, one was filled. There were two pending requests noted on February 12th and two of those were filled. So to date, we have received eight requests for this calendar year at a cost of $670 total, grand total. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda.
There are 11 items on the consent agenda for this evening. Item number one is the gifts to the school district. This meeting, meeting, $5,820. Here to date, $59,826.52. Item number two is the payment of bills. Item number three is the payment for travel. Item four is the human resources report. Item five is field trip approval for Richwoods High School International Baccalaureate seniors to St. Louis, Missouri. Item six is the amendment to the 2018-19 school year calendars. Item number seven is the 2019-2020 school year calendars. Item eight is the Bradley University contract. Item nine is the approval for Lindbergh HVAC project. Item 10 is the approval for Woodruff re-roofing contract change. And item number 11 is the approval for the project labor agreement renewal. And that's the entirety of the consent agenda.
Are there any items anyone would like for, for separate vote?
Madam President, I pulled number 11.
Any other? Yes, sir.
I would like to pull number four, please.
May I have a motion and a second for all items except number 11 and four?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any discussions or comments on any of those items except for 11 and four? Okay. Should call the roll?
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Item number four. I have a motion and a second.
I move that we adopt the human resources report.
Second.
Thank you, Madam President. I have insufficient information on that human resources report to vote on it.
Any other comments or discussions on, on number four? Okay, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Abstain.
Five ayes, one abstain, one nay. Motion carry.
Item number 11.
I move that we adopt item 11 and the approval for the project labor agreement renewal.
Second.
Madam President, I move that we pull number 11 and table it for another time.
Any, I don't think we need a second for that. Is that correct? To table?
That's right.
Okay. So.
I, I think it's been determined that there's some legal issues that we need to discuss and talk about.
Okay. Any other discussion? Would you call the roll? Oh, you don't have to call the roll. That's right. Item 11 is table, sorry.
She on the table with the rest of us though? If I'm wrong.
It only takes one person. It's just-
Point of order. I want a clarification of that. One person can table this whole thing? Because I tried to do this before and that didn't happen. We took a vote on what the issue was. So my clarification is, are we voting on this or is because she has to table, it's tabled? That's my point. I just want to make clear.
I, I, Robert's rules, if you table something, but there's two different ways you can do it. Why don't you, you speak to that?
Well, I mean, my understanding is if you've asked to table it, you give, if it's more amenable to the board, I suppose you can take a vote on whether or not to table it at this point since we have some opposition to tabling it for the next agenda. So if you want to take a vote on tabling the item for the next board meeting, for the next agenda, I would recommend going ahead and doing that now.
All right. Then please call the roll.
On the motion to approve?
The motion to table.
Table, okay.
Did you actually make a motion to table?
No, you have to have a second.
Oh, okay.
So Mrs. Jackson, this is a motion and is there, is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Now, is there a discussion?
That's, yeah.
Okay.
Could you please clarify? I mean, is this, is this a closed item or is this something you can discuss?
Well, it, it's a, a matter of legal issue as it relates to unfair labor practices and regarding contractors, the use of, of contractors, union and non-union contractors. We want to make sure that the language in that, in this agreement is correct and right so we don't get ourselves into unfair labor practices.
Mr. Walther?
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Walther.
Well, we had had this presented to the building committee and I didn't hear any concerns at that time. So I guess my tendency is, is not to support, support the tabling. I just wanted to get a clarification of what your point was. Because Mr. Willis in the committee, I think, had reviewed this and I thought we were okay with it at that point.
If I may? So, I took a look at this and ordinarily under Robert's newly revised, the, the motion to lay on the table or to table is properly used only when it's necessary to suspend consideration of a main motion in order to deal with another matter that has come up unexpectedly and must be dealt with before the pending motion can be properly addressed. And so if there is another matter that must be dealt with before we can properly address this matter, my recommendation is to go with the table, deal with whatever might need to be dealt with, either an open or a closed session until, I'd like to find out more about it. But apparently there's something else. And that is an appropriate use of tabling a motion according to Robert's as I've read them.
Any other comments? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
And again, this is on the motion to-
Table.
Motion to table.
Okay. So I'd be clear.
Mr. Walther?
I'm easily confused, but I'll support the motion to table. Yes.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jackson?
Yes.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye. Aye, yes.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry. I have them tabled.
Okay. Deliberation agenda. Dr. Bob?
Thank you, Madam President. I move that the expulsion listed on the report dated February 26, 2018 be approved as presented.
I got a second. Second.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
I move that the expulsion with, the expulsion held in abeyance listed on the report dated February 26, 2018 be approved as presented.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
I move that the revocation of expulsion to be held in abeyance listed on the report dated February 26, 2018 be approved as presented.
Second.
Mr. Walther?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Jackson?
Aye.
Dr. Davis and Aviles?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Adler?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carry.
Thank you. Presentation and suggestions by board members.
Okay, I have to say something to Mr. Wilson. Okay. And, and I'm chuckling, but I am, I am chuckling along with you because this reminded me, and those of you who were altar boys before the Second Vatican Council will back me up on this. When I was a youngster and I was an altar boy and we would be on the altar and we'd be sitting there and the priest, you know, would, would either raise the chalice or raise, and you would have to do the bells. And I was the guy that was always asleep at the wheel. And I had my, my brother across from me and you're going like this, okay? And so you're the congregation, so they, they got, you got your hand up like this. They can't see you, right? But here's what's going on behind it. And, and my brother's going. So Mr. Wilson, if you ever hear me tell you the bells, you understand what I'm talking
Any, any other presentations, suggestions by board members? Mr. Walther?
Just if the board can bear with me for a few minutes. Last board meeting, I was not here. I was in Florida on a much-needed vacation. But unfortunately, while I was down there, I was there when the shooting occurred at the, at the high school in Broward County. That had a profound effect upon me. I watched several parents express the, the fearfulness that they had dropped off their 14-year-old daughter or son that day and they'll never be able to see that child again. I have absolutely zero confidence in the federal government doing anything to change what's going on here. Marginal that the state will do anything. But I've joined the Never Again movement in saying that whatever this board and this administration can do to make that never happen here in Peoria, I'm committed to doing that. Dave Myers, who's on the building, I'm co-chair with Mrs. Jackson on the building committee and we've asked them to review the security at the buildings and some of the things. And just today, I was at Richwoods and talked. We have schools that don't have doors that lock from the inside. Those are things we can control. We could have better security entrance-wise into the schools. Those are things that we can control. We've got resource officers that I have incredible confidence in. We're trying to legislatively allow them to be able to carry arms to protect our schools so we don't have soft targets. And so I just don't want to be that board member that has to look a parent in the eye and say, "I didn't do everything I could to make this a safe school district." And so I'll get off my little editorial comment, but it, it made an impact on me and I, and I'm very confident. And I talked with Dr. Karat, I called her from the vacation and she's, we've done a lot of things. The gentleman left here on the situation about the student that he alluded to and that was handled, I think, as professionally as we could have done it. It was looked into by both the administration and the campus police and resource officers and assessed that threat. And I'm very comfortable in how we've handled that and what we've done. I think we, we're probably on the cutting edge of, from a lot of school districts and I just want us to stay there. And I just want to thank the administration for how they've handled it and campus resource because I think we're doing a good job. And the social emotional piece is one that we have that a lot of other school districts don't have. And I think it has to be part of what we're doing. So it's my soliloquy for tonight. So I'm done.
I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Walther and I feel the same way as far as putting 100% into making sure our schools are safe. I'm right along with you, Mr. Walther.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson.
I think it would be a great idea in the future to perhaps educate people as to how safe we are now because, as I said, I've been here for a while and we are, we are like 90% better than we used to be. But, you know, we want to be 100% for sure. But I, I don't think we all know just how many safety precautions we've taken. And so maybe a presentation on what is happening and what, what, you know, look at what needs to happen. But there are groups around town that are also looking at this issue and studying it. Dr. Bob?
I think I'm not gonna, so I'm not gonna preempt Dr. Demolong Karat, but I, oh hell, I'll preempt her. Oddly, and with regrettable coincidence, it was several weeks ago prior to the Florida shooting that our policy committee met and were considering the tragedy of a student suicide in another school district. And at that time, I had made the request along Mr. Shaw, that could we take a look at what we do, not knowing at all, completely oblivious to the future, the tragedy that the future would bring to us? Could we look? And our staff were tasked with that and righteously got on board and came back to us with information on what we do and how we do it. And it wasn't but a matter of two days after that, and now I am preempting you, but I am so proud of, of the work you did, Dr. Demolong Karat, that this happened in a matter of hours, that crisis plans, I'm looking at them now, crisis plan, quick guide drafts, et cetera. And that's what's going to be, so Mrs. Ross, the bad news is that we had to be agile. The good news is, is that we are agile.
Yep. Thank you, Dr. Bob. Actually, when we looked at the research and, and just double-checked those best practices versus what we're doing, we have exceeded in every category. I mean, kudos to Chief Boone. And Chief, why don't you come up and, and make some comments? I think the public needs to hear what Dr. Bob was referencing. We sent you, board, that information, I think, on Saturday or Sunday, just in terms of a cheat sheet for almost every scenario you can think of. That's pretty amazing. There's amazing professional development going on for all staff. There's that tip line that Chris mentioned in that newsletter that's, and we've had that tip line, how many years now, Chris? At least two. I mean, and the list goes on and on and on. The social and emotional is huge that Mr. Walther referenced and Coach Booth is doing an amazing job there. There's still a lot more to be done in that area, but I'm really excited about the progress we're making. In terms of entrances too, if you can speak to that, I think for the most part. Yeah. Well, I mean, just quickly because it's, you know, it's on everybody's mind, right? And then the father, the friend came up and spoke. So we want to make sure the public, you know, the public has confidence in, in the practices and the things we're doing. So it's really brief.
Okay. Firstly, I just wanted to thank the board. In the history of our department, I think this is the most unified that we've felt with the district. And we wouldn't be able to do the things that we do unless we had you guys' support. So I really appreciate that. Just a real quick rundown to piggyback off of what Mr. Walther was talking about. We are light years of, ahead of every school district in this state. No other school district in the state has a department that we've had. We have over 47 years of law enforcement experience with our department. No other district has that. With all the officers, including myself and the other ones that went through the police academy, we have over 255 years of police experience. So we have a lot of experience that we can draw from. Our officers are definitely, you know, full throttle since the incidents that happened in Florida. I met with the team. I told, you know, reiterated why we're here and what our cause is. We have gotten a pickup in a lot of reported cases since Florida happened. The great thing is, is we're married to SEL. Everything that happens, we follow through with it. We did before Florida. We still do it. We still do it now.
Right.
Again, we're light-years ahead on that. The issue at Richwoods, it was pretty much handled in two days. Soon as we heard about it, we ran with it. We contacted everyone involved, and we chased down leads. I've said it before, I'd rather chase down a million dead ends than just have one thing happen like it did in Florida. And, and that's what we've been doing. So, again, we're light-years ahead. The crisis plan, Dr. Karat gave me that directive, I believe Wednesday. I knocked that out in my office on Sunday. We turned a sixty-page document into six pages, and it basically details what to do. And I didn't want to pigeonhole anybody to have muscle memory to do the wrong thing. I just wanted them to understand it's fluid. Every situation is fluid. We could have a six-hundred-page crisis plan that won't cover everything, but I just want them in the mindset that things could happen, and things are fluid, and, and have flexibility. So, again, we're light-years ahead, and I'm very confident in, in our safety. My children go to Peoria Public Schools. I wouldn't have them go any other place. I wouldn't put my children in harm's way. I'm confident with this district, so.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mrs. Ross.
Boards from board committees.
I'm gonna go on an additional soliloquy. I guess I would share the sentiments of those who spoke already, and certainly our due diligence as representatives of the school district to ensure that we have taken every precaution to ensure that our schools are safe. And I know that we'll do that on a continual basis. But as, as little faith as I had, have had in the federal and the state governments, I think that's exactly the reason why we need to raise the pressure and raise the expectation for delivering. There's a lot of things we can do to prevent someone from getting into our buildings. There's a lot of things we can do to mitigate any kind of trauma they're able to enact once they get to our buildings. There's almost nothing the school district can do to ensure that people don't come to school with the motive and intent to harm people. That is entirely the broadest reach of culture and, and our society enacted through government. And I think this is the moment. Of all the tragedies, all the school shootings, all of the senseless community violence, this is the time to have that conversation and do very reasonable things that will have a meaningful impact on whether or not there's the next Sandy Hook, Columbine, Parkland. I, I think, I think now's the time, and, and we really just have to raise that bar because the less and less expectation we have, the less and less we're gonna get out of it. So, anyways, that's my two cents.
Oh, I was just gonna give you my.
Board.
Yes.
Report.
Right, right.
Board committee.
Policy committee will meet March twenty-first, that is the third Wednesday, at nine-thirty a.m.
We hadn't said it, I don't think. Now, the board, board committee reports?
Mr. Walther and I and, and Mr. Adler attended our second meeting regarding the name-changing of, of the school we met at Valeska. Did not have the crowd that we expected, but we did what we needed to do as a board to be open and transparent about how we're doing this and what's gonna happen. So, the next building committee meeting, we'll be discussing all the things that came out of those two meetings, and we'll have a report to the board probably in the next month. Do you have anything else?
Nope. It'll be the March nineteenth meeting. The building committee will make a recommendation for that.
Okay. Great. Anything else for the good of the board?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.